All right, let's hear it for measuring success in our dashboard.
So actually, today we just really wanted to give you a quick update about what measuring success has been doing and the sort of work to sort of be in tandem with the ELC strategic planning process. Unfortunately, Holly had to head back to Eugene, so she was originally going to present today, so she apologized for not being able to be here today. But I think just in terms of the sort of long-term goal of measuring success, just like the ELC strategic planning process has really been about trying to take a look at that sort of whole system cross-sector approach to what does it really take to support children and families across Oregon to be successful. I think we've been trying to sort of doing a little bit of a sort of regrouping of measuring success to sort of think about that from the measurement side of the equation. And so I think what we're going to do today is just, in some sense, I think a little bit of a refresher of where the conversation now stands, so that we'll be well set up to sort of bring you some more materials to look at at the October retreat of the council.
Yeah, and just to add on to that, for some context, October will be when we bring you the dashboard. The committee next week will actually be looking at everything we talked about today. They'll get their first pass to the strategic plan on Wednesday. And so the October meeting with you all on the 29th and 30th will be that chance to really look at this work together.
Okay, and just because it does feed from and into this conversation, I think David was at our table when we talked about data and the fact that there isn't much data. So explaining how you're putting a dashboard together when we don't really have the data that we want in order to make some decisions will be really helpful.
And to be honest, we are starting with the data that we have, not with the data that we want, has just been a point of departure for the conversation at this point. I think that doesn't mean that some point in the future, you know, that couldn't be a part of the conversation. And I'm going to totally jump off of the agenda and, you know, I mean, you know, it does feel like, and I'm so not empowered to say this, that, you know, one of the opportunities that there could be in the future is that, you know, we would all love to have a wonderful integrated data system, but in some sense, there's a lot of data that we could get from a really good population level survey at the state. And, you know, I think there might be an opportunity. I always think that maybe one of the things that could emerge from this process is every state agency that impacts children puts in a little bit of money to get a population level survey that helps us answer some of the shared questions that we can't currently answer. Anyways, I was a total non-sectarian.
Can I ask something about the membership?
Yeah.
So the issue of data came up. I sit on the Black Student Success Committee, which is another statewide committee focused on black student success. I know there's a similar one for the Native American population as well. And we were, I'm on the subcommittee within that committee of early childhood. And we are the only committee that doesn't have any data to talk, because the whole part of building a plan around student success is to be gearing towards outcomes that are data specific. And there was not, we don't have the data in early childhood to have any goals around it. And I would imagine the same is true for the Native American committee. And I just feel like I don't see them on this list. And it is a, it is a challenge when you're trying, particularly because early childhood is so important to everything else. So I feel like, one, it would be nice to have membership that intersects with those committees because they're focused on a continuum of success for education and children, but also just thinking about how you disseminate what you do have to these other state committees that are focused on student success.
And so I think, you know, and we'll get to this in a second. I think, you know, one of, one of the challenges, particularly, I'll talk from this perspective of the early care and education sector rather than the full learning system sector, I think the challenges around data are even worse for the early care and education sector than I think for the other sectors. I mean, there's challenges across the way. And I think some of that is just, in some sense, a result of a little bit of the history that early care and education in general was, you know, sort of...
It's a private system, not separate.
Yeah, that wasn't, yeah, yeah. So I think it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a huge problem. But maybe it's something we can talk a little bit about how we're sort of thinking about that at this point in the, in the process. So let me jump ahead. But I think one of the things that we did want to show you is that we've, we are really trying to make sure that we hear from health, from human services, from K through 12, as part of, as part of this conversation. I want to thank Bill Bani, who, who's been participating in that. We've also really gotten some great participation from Sarah Kleinschmidt from OHA. And actually, we have some housing folks who will be joining us on Wednesday. Just had a great conversation that Holly set up just this week with the housing sector. So I think effort to, to really help with that. Just to sort of go back to some slides that we showed you before, this was sort of the theory of change that we sort of started with for the dashboard. And I think this, this was sort of put together, I think, in spirit of also where the council was in terms of its sort of strategic planning process. So I think the idea was that if there are some really clear, shared, true outcomes for children and families that we're sort of thinking about and looking at and measuring, that are the outcomes that we know that no one sector or no one partner or no one agency or no one community can change on their own. But if we identify those collectively and that all of those sectors can agree to work on those as the outcomes, it helps with that sort of collective orientation and collective impact. And Bobby, I know that's something that's been really important for you. I don't know if that's anything you wanted to add around that.
Yeah, that, just, we want to be sure that we're talking about our, our belief that we've got to do it together or it'll never happen.
So this led us to, in part, so what we were, in terms of the definition of long-term outcomes, as part of what we're trying to develop for the dashboard is both a sort of long-term outcomes that are shared across the system and then as well as intermediary outcomes. And I'll talk a little bit more about that. So, should we go back to the previous slide? So I think part of what we were sort of looking at for criteria for the long-term outcomes is that they were focused on those ultimate outcomes for children and families. So not rate of service, rate of access to services or outcomes from a particular program, although we know those are really important to look at. But in terms of what are those sort of true outcomes for children and families, look at those to drive positive change for children and families historically farthest from opportunity. Realize we may have some discussion about language that came up already. Measure actual outcomes, not access quality of an out, or quality or outcome for a specific program. And then also to measure at the population level. And, but also the important to make sure that when we're measuring the population level, that we can also disaggregate that data to see how various populations across Oregon are being impacted by that, particularly to be able to look at across racial and ethnic groups. And then also, we just wanted to also be honest on, when you look at these really big, true population level outcomes, they don't change overnight. They don't change in a year. That these are the things that are sort of the North Star kinds of outcomes, that it can take five years or more to really demonstrate the change that we want to see. But we still want to maintain focus on them because they are the things that really are the differences we hope to support for children and families. So, so far, we do have a preliminary list. This is still very preliminary. We have a lot of vetting to do. And we'll have a chance to dig into this in October and talk, and talk about this a little bit more. One of the things that we tried to mark though is we're really trying to build off of the work that was done by the Child and Family Wellbeings Work Group. And so not reprevent, you know, to really make sure that that work is, is incorporated. So you'll see a lot of those are recommendations that came from that work group. But you'll see we're trying to bring in some things like housing, housing security as part of that. So more work to do, but this is just a first, first glimpse. And we'll really give you guys a chance to dig into that at the October meeting. And then sort of part of what we're also trying to do is start to think about a sort of library of potential intermediary measures. Do you want to go to the, yeah, to, that will be work that we've been sort of, people bringing to the table. And there's an air, an effort to, whereas the idea for the long-term measures is that everything, those measures really have to be collectively owned across the sectors. There's an opportunity with the intermediary measures for, to make sure there's opportunity for each sector to also see their, their contribution a little bit more directly in, in the works. That's something we're still trying to think about. And the group has really come up with some wonderful suggestions. And so Wednesday, we're going to do an exercise that at least I'm calling Pin the Indicator on the Plan. So we're taking the sort of preliminary list of indicators that the group has come up, intermediary income measures the group has come up with, and spending a little bit of time to see to what extent do they line up with the draft strategies for the ELC strategic plan, both to get a sense of to what extent does that work converging, diverging. And so, not sure what will come of that, but I think it's just, just we wanted to make sure that the group had a chance to sort of dive into the ELC strategic plan and really keep that work aligned. Unless there's anything you sort of want to add about that process or next steps?
No, I think everyone's really excited because this will be the first time this work is coming together. We've kind of intentionally kept the strategic planning discussions here out of the Measuring Success Committee, whereas all the other committees, it's really been embedded in that work. So this will be the committee's first time to really hear about what you've all been discussing for the last six, six or eight months. So I think we're excited to see where there is overlap and where there might be gaps that need to be addressed. And I think it's going to be a great exercise of where we know we don't have data and that's okay right now. So I think it'll lead to a pretty great discussion at your retreat in October to really look at what we're, what we are able to track and what we, we would like to track. Yeah.
So I, I'm going to ask my question again because I don't feel like this answered the first time. Is it possible to add people to that committee? What I see in there is a cross-sector committee, not a cross-cultural committee.
Right.
And I think that it's important that it is cross-cultural as well.
Yeah.
And so is that possible?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah. And I, I think the timelines of these, I think the intention was the strategic plan will be finished and the dashboard is going to finish after because it really depends on where the strategic plan lands in part. So we can definitely continue to bring on folks to this committee and make sure.
Just follow up.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah. And we can talk to you about are there other avenues where we should be bringing this for discussion? Are there other groups that can come to the table but also have a bigger group of experts that should weigh in on this at their setting? I think is, would be great too. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then you all know these next steps of what's happening. But the retreat will really be the time to look at these together and make sure everyone's on the right track. And the plan and the dashboard interact in a way that's useful to one another.
Sounds great. Sounds so easy. Good. Thanks. Easy peasy. Just line it up.
Yep, I know, right?
Right.
Okay.
Well, and that is a very impressive membership list that you had on that slide. You have a lot of expertise sitting around that table. So thanks, Bill, for being a part of that. It's, it's great. That's a great cross-sector.
Oh, we're really excited to have housing folks joining.
Yes.
We don't have Miriam or Dawn back, so we cannot move to a director's report or rules. So folks, I want to take a couple-minute break. Five-minute break. And then we can come back.
Yeah. Okay, yeah. Let's do a five-minute break. I think they're on a phone call that was to end at quarter of two. So. Have some more childcare rules adopted. So Dawn is here to...
Could I do something about them?
Take us through those. And I don't know if we have people on the phone.
So we, Holly and Martha, like we do this.
Yes. So we, yeah. Martha and Holly are on the phone now. Okay. Welcome, Martha and Holly. Thank you for being on the phone. And there's no one who has signed up for public testimony, correct? Okay. So we will go on to Dawn Taylor. Welcome, Dawn.
Thank you. And so since the phone system isn't quite working, if there are questions, I'm going to try to repeat them back if Martha and Holly can't, can't hear because they're not quite on the same system. So I'm here for you today, with you today to bring forward some rules and also to provide an update of where we're at from the other rules that we have passed. And so today I want, will, I want to go through kind of a summary of the rules because there's been a lot of work done that are going to be effective September 30. And so as a reminder, you guys adopted rules around the CCDF requirements, House Bill 4065, and infant needs around safe sleep. Also, we, you guys did temporary rules around the governor's directive and adopted LED rules in February. And so those are all effective September 30. I wanted to share what we're doing with the field to communicate all these rules changes because, you know, it's definitely not 100% clear. And so we're working hard to communicate with all the different changes and sets. And so on October 1, right after this meeting, actually, we have teed up to do a postal mailing, an email blast, and our website in order to get the information out about all the new rules. We're also, we'll be revising a new rulebook. In the past, when we've had, you know, a rule change here and there, we usually send an insert. But we feel that there's been enough changes over the last several years that we need to send out a new rulebook with all the changes. And I see Eva nodding her head vigorously.
I even got asked about one. It was the new rulebook.
Yeah. So we're going to be sending that out so that it's all clear what the new rules are, along with, we'll have posted knowledge documents around some of the rules. That is a new thing that we haven't done before that really described how to meet this rule, what, what it kind of looks like. I can give an example of safe sleep one. We have like pictures of what a sleep sack... I can give an example of safe sleep one, we have like pictures of what a sleep sack looks like, that's appropriate, not appropriate, so it's kind of a knowledge document to share what that look, how that should look. And then also, we'll be training licensing specialists and CCRNR in order to support providers. I'm actually getting next week, going out on a roadshow to some of our rural offices to do some conversations with our licensing staff out there, and that'll be part of the training as well for them and asking questions, and, and we try to do an annual roadshow to get, we'll be going to Eugene, Medford, and our Redmond office, so that will be a good time. So the rules that I am bringing, any questions on that before I dive right in? Okay. So there are three sets of rules that I'm wanting to bring before you today for consideration. The first set that I'll be covering is making the temporary rules associated with the Governor's Directive, move those to become permanent, and there's some changes that I'll identify based on the public, the public comment period and the engagement that we did. The second set is to continue our, to continue with our goal to better inform parents, is a set of temporary rules to notify parents when there is a safe sleep violation. And the third set, to keep us in compliance with CCDF reauthorization, are some temporary rules in the Central Background Registry, and I'll explain when we get to that set while, why we're bringing these forward again as these have been promulgated in the past. And I thought, and I talked with Sue about it, I'm thinking because these are three discrete sets that we may want to consider each independently of each other as I kind of move forward, so I'll kind of explain it and then let discussion, yeah.
Vote on it and then move on to the next one.
Great. So first, I wanted to start with the rules associated with the Governor's Directive, and again, this is moving the rules that you passed as temporary rules, moving those to permanent. And just as kind of a reminder, when the Governor directed us to implement a more robust vetting system for out-of-state providers who are caring for children in Oregon, and so we have, we're working on that process without a national data system, there are some challenges, but we're making good connections with state partners, and we're working actually closely with DHS, I know Bill was over meeting about, so that they can do that on their side as well, and so we have gone through all of the past ones and have made process changes in order for us to be able to collect more information to help us go in and be able to look at if an individual has any history, concerning history within a childcare facility in another state. I can report that the only negative history that we have found was with the Sunnyside Sprouts, which is the tragedy that happened up in Portland around infants being bound in programs. And so the second part of the directive, which is really related to these rules, is implementing new licensing procedures regarding communication with families, requiring facilities to provide notices to families about any serious issues found by the state or status changes to the facility's license, and post information at their facility about the state's childcare safety portal, making families aware immediately when the state finds that a facility is operating illegally without a license. In the interim, we must know, make every effort to notify, so that's a summary of the Governor's Directive. I want to highlight a few key changes based on the feedback that we received with the rule set that you had in your binder, was one, that there was a recommendation that we add clearly viewed into it, that it, note that the information must be posted where it can be clearly viewed. Secondly, we received significant input from both centers and family-based childcare that they wanted to not have a specific form in which the declaration that parents have seen the license, they wanted to be able to develop their own system, and so we, you know, we listened to that and heard that, and so now the change in language is that the declaration must be approved by the Office of Childcare, but they can develop what system works within their constructs. And the third change, not so much a change, but more of a clarification, was that the declaration will be updated whenever there has been an exception or condition added to the license. That's, those are things that would be added that would mean that there was some significant change to how something is being practiced in there, and then that is when you would want the parent to know that. And so those are the changes based on the feedback that we received, that we have in your packet, that we would like to move forward and propose for consideration to be adopted as permanent.
All right, council members, any questions of Dawn on these rules? If not, I would entertain a motion to adopt with these amendments included.
So moved.
Thank you Eva. All right, thanks Terry. Any further discussion? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Martha?
Martha, was that an aye?
Yeah.
Okay.
You got an aye.
Holly?
Yes, aye.
And any abstentions? I don't think so. All right, motion passes.
Great, thank you.
Thank you Dawn.
So this next set of temporary rules that I'm bringing forward to you today, as we continue to improve our communication with parents, and given the importance of safe sleep and the tragedies that have occurred, we feel it's really urgent to inform families when there's a safe sleep violation. Our goal is to make this notification to all parents of children under the age of 12 months, 12 months or younger, and that we would communicate this information, and it would be phrased around the importance of safe sleep practices in childcare and why it's important to follow. We recognize that parents may request their provider to be placed on their stomach or given their special blanket, which can be challenging for the providers, and so we see this as an opportunity to both educate and support providers to use safe sleep practices. We've engaged with AFSCME on these rules and will work with them and other providers to ensure that knowledge documents are clear and understandable and that they are informed of this new requirement should these move forward. We will work with both licensing specialists, childcare providers, and union partners to provide information and technical assistance in meeting these, this requirement. In light of the tragedies and the importance of safe sleep with these temporary rules, it feels urgent that we need to be sure that we're making parents aware when safe sleep violations occur and being able to educate all in the importance of those practices. I think it's important to note that this does not replace the posting of safe sleep violations, as those are a serious violation and a part of the Governor's Directive rules that we have in there, but that this is really an extra step to educate and inform.
All right, any questions of Dawn on this rule? I'm confused, I'm confused as to now the rules we're going through, the temporary rules, are we going to vote to adopt them as temporary rules?
That's my ask, yes, thank you, thank you.
Okay. Thanks Bobby. If there's no discussion, I'd love a motion to adopt this safe sleep notification. If there's a second?
There's a second.
Thanks Miriam. Discussion, those in favor say aye.
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 And opposed? I don't think so. All right, thank you, motion passed.
Great, thank you. The next set of rules you're very familiar with is switching back to our Central Background Registry rules, which I didn't go back and look at exactly which council meeting these were passed, but they, they have been passed. And I want to kind of articulate the need for some temporary rules, and if you looked in your, when you're reviewing your documents, there was just some changes, pretty minor changes, and I want to kind of explain why we need these temporary rules to stay in compliance with our September 30 CCDF rules, is that there was actually some statute changes to Oregon crimes in terms of where they positioned them, and that is really what's requiring us to update our Central Background rules. The rules you received are, like I said, primarily cleanup of some of the reordering, and most importantly, updated the crimes that are disqualifying conditions. And so we need to make sure that we address for our CCDF funding all felony and Class A misdemeanors, so those are the pieces that have been added and then restructured because we list all the crimes in our rules, so if a order changes on the, what, the criminal statute side, I don't know the name of it, then we need to update our rules. And so the urgency in bringing this forward is that these are required by September 30 for us to be in compliance of the disqualifying conditions, and so asking for you to adopt these rules temporarily to keep us in compliance, and then we would be moving forward with the formal rule process.
So temporary adoption is good enough to meet the federal requirement?
Yeah.
I move. Okay, is there a second? Thanks Pat, any discussion? I have a question, so is all that's happening is we're taking out the marijuana? I just want to understand what we're doing.
Yeah, so essentially, the, the statute, I didn't bring up my actual rules, but the statute where all the rules are in, they reorganized their rules, and with the regulation of marijuana, it moved the structure, so there's, the changes are just simply-
No change in content?
No change in content, except-
If the change is all ordering?
Those are the, yeah, those ones on the front page where there was some highlighted, there's a few disqualifying based on the structure, and they're like forcing minors to sell drugs, that is a disqualifying condition, sodomy three, you know, there, there's some that are disqualifying that we needed to move in based on the restructure and move. So there's no change really in the content or what it's going to do, it's really just getting it in line with our statute that lists the crimes.
Okay, so just to be completely clear, we're not changing where we stand on marijuana in childcare facilities?
No, not at all.
Thank you. And, I mean, there's red, which are the deletions, there are also blue additions, and that's also an ordering issue?
Exactly.
All right.
So to help clarify, in session last year, the, a separate statute was created, particular to marijuana, which is why you're seeing that one pulled out so frequently, so it gets deleted and then placed in in a different spot. So it's not changing anything we've done, it really is just an alignment piece, because they, because statutes have been reordered separate from us, our rules just have to refer to the right crimes and where they live.
And where they live, thank you Alyssa.
Yeah.
And there's no change in our facility rules around anything?
We certainly want to align with the statutes and where the crimes live. All right, any discussion, further discussion of the motion? If not, those in favor of adoption say aye.
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 All right, any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
So these are temporary, so when are we going to see you and them again, Dawn?
Alyssa, we-
It'll be-
Within six months.
Within six months.
Yeah, we, we could bring them back with the remaining rule revisions, we haven't determined yet if it's easier for you guys to see it with everything else that'll happen, or if you want us to bring these back separately. But the temporary is just so we can get it done, and we have, we have to then notice and follow all of the public comment periods before we can bring it back for permanent adoption.
And not lose our federal funding. Well, there's a good goal, yes.
I just have a question, do we take the time to ensure, not do we the council, but do people that are overseeing these child, like the direct overseers, I guess, to sort of search and make sure they're not storing, so, I mean, the cannabis thing is like so prolific now, I guess, to be transparent, I'm wondering, do people search the establishments, particularly home-based establishments, to make sure there are not marijuana cookies and other things on the premises, because they are fairly prevalent right now? And I'm, so the accountability to it, it's great to have the rule, but I'm wondering, what are we doing to hold people accountable?
Yeah, so as in, is in line with our facility rules, that's a part of our inspections.
Okay.
In looking, we check all, especially particularly in homes, all areas, not just those used for childcare, so that we can ensure that the premises are safe for kids and that the rules are being followed.
Great.
But inspect is probably a better verb than search, right?
Inspect.
Because I would imagine it's visible areas and those kinds of-
Cabinets.
Right. Which is a pretty important distinction.
Like we're not allowed to, or?
It's, our job is not to investigate or to search, our job is to inspect.
Okay.
That would be another impact on-
Words are important.
They mean things.
Yeah, they do mean things.
I remember, sorry, I remember when we were discussing this, just to kind of put it in the perspective, like the rules, and I, like, correct me if I'm wrong about how I'm remembering this, so like for alcohol, for example, you can't have alcohol, you can't consume alcohol during your childcare businesses, your business hours, so if you're 24/7 facility, but you don't take care of children 24/7, and you are clearly closed, like you're allowed to have alcohol for, you know, an event, or you can just, personal consumption, as long as the childcare children aren't present. And then during the hours that they are available, or that, that you're open for business and childcare, children are present, the alcohol is supposed to be kept in an area that children are not located, so like if you have a basement refrigerator and the children never go to the basement, that is accessible, that's an acceptable place for the alcohol, but like you can't have it in your refrigerator where the children are, like, so it, when I, like, and I know that the, we landed in a different place for marijuana, but one of the things that, you know, like, I think about when, like, if I were an in-home provider, like what, like, I want the safest environment, right, but I also want to be able to have my family have their life and their, my, and, you know, so what, you know, like, what are the parameters, do we want to have it at the same level that we do for alcohol, or do you want it to be you search everywhere and then you have a family member who might use it in their bedroom where the children never ever go and they're not there during the hours that the children are there too?
Yeah, I think what's hard about marijuana is it's coming in forms like candy and cookies and things that like kids could access, and so-
Right, and they're not-
There's, there's not, it's not like alcohol in that way, like, there are so many different forms and textures and all this, that I just, for the safety of children, wonder, you know, how do we protect children from digesting something that they may think is just a lollipop? And in fact, it's different.
Yeah, so I, yeah, and I totally get that too, but I was, you know, like, I'm just, I'm also trying to like think about, like, I've always thought about it in that, like, okay, if I, if I had this and I had adult children living in my household, you know, like, and you sure, certainly the rules of my house are the rules of my house, but they might be keeping something in their room.
That's true.
We had something, like, inspect, you know, this-
Maybe like, I mean, in my head, it was inspecting common spaces, not bedrooms, but I, I mean, if I was a childcare home-based provider, I would eliminate any of these things from the home for the sake, because kids wander, kids, I don't know, like, there's just things-
Well, if, I mean, I-
I would just say you'll have to do the same with tobacco products then, because tobacco products are clearly made to look like candy, and I would also, I would argue multivitamins. So I think-
You can get poison from multivitamins? Yeah, but they don't have a hallucinogen-
No, but they look like candy, and, and they're made to look like candy, and, and too much of them, kid eats a bottle of them, they're not going to do well. So I, I think the emphasis, I mean, I understand where you're coming from as a parent, I feel the same way, but I think that if we get to the point where we're opening cupboards and that sort of thing, and not just doing the education to emphasize the safety, we're going to push down our supply even further because we're really talking about an incredible invasion of someone's privacy to run an in-home childcare center.
And I think it's important just to note that there is a lot of rules around having locks on cabinets, locks on medicine cabinets, so a lot of these things that are being discussed is actually covered within other rules of protecting children and keeping toxins, vitamins, medicine, anything like that, those all have to be under a, a locking system where children can't get into. can't get into.
Okay.
And that's inspected.
And that's inspected.
Thank you.
Miriam, we would love a legislative update.
So I'm going to start Director's Report, I want to spend most of the time kind of talking about legislative days, but first let me, I'll begin with touching on some staffing changes at the division. And again, I email, Alyssa and I were in touch and shared this information as I shared it with Early Learning Division staff, but the Early Learning Division is growing and we're having some, we're also transitioning folks into some new positions. So I think I've mentioned this before multiple times, but it is actually happening officially on Monday. David Mandell will be the Pritzker Foundation Fellow, so he can focus on the prenatal to three kind of systems development work, and I'm no longer in the role of Policy, Director of Policy and Research, so congratulate David again. I am, I am going to be onboarding, beginning tomorrow, a new executive assistant, Melika Nar. Cass Futter is not leaving the division, fortunately for us, she is transitioning, doing a job rotation as the Room Coordinator for the division, who, you know, the position was previously filled by Ari, so congratulations to Cass, and look forward to introducing you all to Melika. I also want to share with you that Sarah Michelson is transitioning to the Chief of Staff position within the division. It's important to note, this is incorporating a lot of the functions that, and the roles and responsibilities of the position that David has vacated in order to focus on the prenatal to three systems work. So this is really coordinating legislative policy, planning, research, and strategic communications within the Office of the Early Learning System Director. So I don't know if Sarah's in the room, but please, there she is, congratulations to Sarah, thank you. These are some recruitments, I think as you'll hear as I talk about legislative updates, as well as we'll continue to share with you more opportunities to grow the capacity of the division, to fill some critical functions, so expect hopefully more soon, but for, these are the ones that I want to share with you today. We have a position posted for a Director of Community Systems, so this is really going to, under one manager unify the staff that support early learning hubs, the function of Head Start collaboration, parenting engagement and education, as well as our P3 alignment work under, again, one leader. We think that as our work grows, and as we've been talking about today, really being able to work very intentionally to support implementation of programs, work and partner with communities, really have that partnership with communities around our systems building work, especially with hubs, we think this is a unit and a function within the division that we'd like to see grow, so this is an important first step, is being able to unify a lot of these programs under one director, as well as then hopefully add more capacity in the future. We're also recruiting for a Communications Director. This person will help coordinate all of our kind of public information functions, so, you know, speak to the media, facilitate public information requests, work across the division to, you know, support stakeholder engagement efforts, strategic communications, information sharing, as well as also, I think, be a resource for the Early Learning Council, as we think about our work, we've talked, you know, we're working on strategic planning, this would be a key person that would help us with some of those dissemination activities. We continue to get sort of a lot of feedback around, you know, how we're staying in more regular and ongoing communication about the things that are happening or the ones that are working on here in the division. So we see this as really important. The other recruitment that is sort of progressing is for a Rules Coordinator, so this is also a very important position, and we'll work closely with the Early Learning Council and help in working very closely with Alyssa and Sarah and the policy team, and Sue Miller on supporting our rules work. And then we are continuing our ongoing recruitment for a Licensing Director, and as a reminder, this position is responsible for overseeing all of the field operations for licensing. We have been unsuccessful so far in our recruitment efforts and finding candidates for this position, so for this position in particular, and all of these positions, we really encourage you to, you know, please reach out to your networks for the Community Systems Director for Communications and Licensing, please help spread the word. Please connect with me directly if there are any candidates that you feel I should be reaching out to or talking to, so we'd really appreciate that support. Any questions? We've already touched on the children's agenda sort of earlier in kicking off strategic planning, so I think in the interest of time, and I know it's been a long day, I won't go over these again, and I will get to the legislative part. And first, I want to start with talking about our actions this week to go before the E-Board in the Legislature. So as we've talked about here at the Council, we've seen a, we've received about $25 million annually in new federal childcare funds, $50 million of biennium. This was really an unexpected, you know, increase in federal childcare funding that we received earlier this year, and along with that came the, sort of, it was both unexpected and the funds that, when we received them, were backdated to the start of the federal fiscal year, was September 30th. So the important point to know and is, and to remember, is that there are some requirements about how these, you know, how these funds, how quickly you need to be able to expend these funds. So that really necessitated us, given the kind of federal timelines and the requirements about expending these funds, to put a spending plan together and work really quickly, and therefore go before the E-Board earlier this week during legislative days. There was, when we received this information in the early spring, we took the action in working closely with DHS, and Bill, and Kim, and their colleagues, to convene a group of stakeholders that brought together legislators, advocates, our partners, ASME and SEIU representing providers and other providers, to put, you know, to give input into recommendations around the spending plan. So that work happened over the summer, and then this week, we presented to the Legislature a spending plan and asked for approval. So I'm first going to talk about some of the details of what the request was before the E-Board. So one is that our increase is really for the authority to be able to expend the funds, so it's an increase in funding limitation, and we're focused on the money that we would spend during the remainder of this biennium. So that's why it's not a $25 million spending plan, it's a $21.9 million spending plan, reflecting our estimates of what we would spend before, throughout, through the end of the biennium. It had three components to it, the first, and all of these, again, are consistent with the recommendations that we receive from the Work Group, as well as the federal requirements. Some of these funds do, along with how, the timelines in which you have to expend the funds, have also requirements about how to spend the funds. So the, under the federal rules, the majority of the funds will go to childcare assistance, so helping families who are income eligible for ERDC be able to receive support in affording childcare. So the plan of 64% of the $21.9 million roughly in the request would be spent in two ways. One, through a transfer to the Department of Human Services, to the ERDC program to support childcare assistance, as well as a pilot of infant-toddler quality supply building effort. So this was a request for the Legislature to support a pilot of Baby Promise, as we've talked about it here at the Council, and its sort of working title. Specifically, our request on Baby Promise, and I'll touch on the DHS portion and the ERD portion of the funds, sort of at the end, was really to work with three communities, approximately 50 to 60 providers within three communities, and reach approximately 200 to 250 families with this pilot program. So that was the first component. The second was 26% going for direct supports for childcare providers. More specifically, we, through this new investment, are going to be able to subsidize the cost of enrollment in the Central Background Registry for all providers. I know Dawn and Sarah and Alyssa and others were with our Quality Improvement Specialists this week, and when that part was announced, there was wild applause, as you remember that under the federal rules, the background check process is more costly and more stringent now, and so there is, there was a lot of excitement, and this is feedback we received that would be helpful for providers, as well as covering and subsidizing the cost of new federal training requirements, particularly around CPR and first aid. And then the remainder of these funds, this is about $5.6 million roughly, will go into the professional learning system, so RNRs, to really be able to build up capacity, specifically looking at scaling quality improvement, you know, focused childcare networks, adding more quality improvement specialists that have been lost since 2017 in that system. So more training and technical assistance for providers by building up RNRs. And then 10% of the funds for strengthening the licensing program, including monitoring and our support to programs. And then specifically here, what we requested in positions for licensing were 14 positions. This would have reduced caseloads from 1 to 138 to 1 to 125, as well as additional capacity in the central office to be able to support field operations. So nine of the licensing positions were for the field, and then five positions were for the central office, kind of capacity to support field operations. So we were successful at E-Board with moving forward some of these elements, but not all of the elements, so I want to talk a little bit with you about what was received. So on the-
Miriam, let me, excuse me, let me just interrupt and see, are there any questions from Council about what Miriam has just outlined as far as the allocation of the federal money, the positions that were asked for? Nope, okay.
Okay, thanks. So here is what was approved by the Legislature this week for the infant and toddler supply building, so the pilot of Baby Promise. All of the funds associated with startup were approved, about $800,000 of the original request. And language in the motion that was approved by the E-Board indicates that once we have more information on which communities, how many providers, and sort of the next phase of the pilot, which would be then the portion of the funds that would actually go out as part of provider payments, when the, once those details were sort of farther along in the pilot, we will return to E-Board in December, is what we're aiming for, to then ask for the release of the next set of funds, so the provider payment portion of the funds, which we're estimating to be about $3.3 million for the remainder of the biennium. So that is good news, so I think folks should feel excited that a pilot of Baby Promise will be launching, and I think there was, in my conversations and discussions with legislators, I think a lot of interest to see what we can learn as we go into session, sort of from this pilot, to be able to inform conversations about how we might scale an effort to really address the crisis in infant care specifically, that we know and we've talked about as a Council exists in our state. So we're on our way.
Yeah. I mean, I think that's very exciting because it shows a recognition now, at least on E-Board legislators, that there really is an infant-toddler need in this state, and I'm guessing that's never even on anyone's radar screen up until now.
Right.
So nice going.
Yes, absolutely. And then the second sort of modification to the original request was for the positions in licensing. And so, we had nine positions approved, as I mentioned, and those were for the field office, and so we'll be returning in December, before the December E-Board, and providing more detail about the positions that are needed within the central office, and what those functions, and we'll work through those, what additional information is needed. I think it's fair to say, an important context for everybody to know, there was a pretty large docket for the E-Board for September with many, many actions, and so I think what the recommendation really was, was that we work between now and December to provide additional details about the positions and their functions, and return in December. So that is the plan for the additional licensing positions, and I think that it's also important for Council members to know that we are looking at the positions and the capacity in licensing across a number of different phases. So this was sort of Phase 1. We will get to caseload impact of 1 to 125 with the positions that were approved from 1 to 138. Our goal is by the end of session to be down to 1 to 100, as well as have additional capacity within central office to support field operations, so we're sort of moving through it in phases. Any questions about that? Yeah.
Are you, the support for providers, are you coming to it? Did you just change the order?
I did touch, I did touch, I touched on subsidizing enrollment in the CBR for providers, covering the cost of training, and then resources for RNRs.
Did we get all of that?
Yes, we did.
Oh, thank you.
Sorry, yes, yes, we got all of that.
Okay.
Yeah, yes, so, great news.
So there, the two things will go back in December, they weren't no's, they would just come back?
Yeah, come back in December with, and so we're, yeah, that, and I should say that in my conversations about this request with legislators, you know, because these are federal funds, I think there were, there were a lot of questions about, you know, the stability and the sustainability of these funds, and so it was really important to be able to share with legislators that nothing that we've received in terms of guidance from the federal government has indicated that these are one-time funds, unlike what you see with stimulus or R funding, this was, the guidance that we received in this situation was, these are resources to help implement the new federal childcare law that was passed in 2014, and so we also shared with legislators that even more recent actions at the federal level indicate that this is really the new base funding for CCDBG. Obviously, all federal funding, including our current federal funding for, you know, for our major early childhood programs are subject to annual appropriations, but some of, as some of you may be aware, just this week, Congress passed Education and Health and Human Services Appropriations Bill that actually increased CCDF funding $50 million over last federal fiscal year's funding level, as well as increases for early Head Start and Head Start as well. So that's on its way to the President's desk. So I think those were really important points to continue to emphasize with legislators and answer those questions as we kind of move forward with the priorities for these funds. The final component I want to touch on around the spending plan for the additional CCDF dollars are the portion of the funds that will go to the Department of Human Services for the ERDC program. And I want to start by talking about and sharing the priorities that emerged from the Working Group. So one, the sort of, the three main, major priorities, there was a discussion about a lot of different needs in ERDC, and I'll give Bill a chance to definitely share his thoughts, but three real pri- his thoughts, but three real priorities that emerged were, were decreasing copayments for families, increasing reimbursement rates, and doing work to build a supply of odd hour care, and then rural care in communities. So what we were not able to do this week was present final, a final recommendation for the DHS portion of the funds. And so we were, we did inform legislators of that. This is about $10.6 million of the $25 million that we received that will be transferred to our, to ERDC. And the reason for us not being able to present a final recommendations around the use of this $10.6 million is because a number of the priorities, these priorities that the Working Group identified are impacted by an IT issue at the Department of Human Services, an IT issue. And so what we really, what we, what we said to legislators and shared with them this week is that DHS needs additional time to explore options because of this IT issue that will be available to them around, around these priorities, and that we will return to the E-Board in December with a spending plan for the remainder, for the, for the, this portion of the, of the funds, the $10.6 million.
Sure. Maybe I can give a little texture about the IT--
Yeah.
Because I know there's like IT issue. Is, there is a master project underway, it's Integrated Eligibility Process, and it's, it's really looking at our global system through DHS and how we're actually able to really do more of integrated work across the board. It's been a multi-multi-million dollar project that's been going in.
Biggest IT project in state history, actually.
And so it's, it's one of those things, right now we're contracting out with Deloitte to put it in place. And as Deloitte's moving into that process of really testing, we're in what's, what's framed now is kind of a policy freeze or code freeze. And as a code freeze or policy freeze, it's that point of testing. And as we are testing, we can't change any of the policy or code that would impact our ability to implement some of these strategies. So in that we can't change the code or policy right now, we're looking at, how do you do it in a way that's going to be kind of a workaround or innovative way, or doing it in a way that's going to allow the latitude to implement some of these strategies, but certainly having an impact on the IE structure? We can't do two things. We can't change, don't really have the latitude to start over with the ID and have the code freeze, nor can we delay the timelines. If we delay the timelines on that, then we have a limited ability to actually use some of our additional funding, federal funding to pay for that. So that's, that's one of the challenges we're having. Okay, so we are meeting, I think, next in early October with, with some of our stakeholders and some of the folks in the capital to give a deeper dive on just what the IE and Eligibility Transformation Project is all about. And it's much more of a macro level, so people have a deeper understanding of what this is looking like. Following that meeting, we're going to be meeting with the stakeholders that were involved in the Work Group and actually talking about how we're able to operationalize these three strategies specifically. So we had to put a pause button on it because we couldn't, we really couldn't put it in motion, because I think for a lot of folks who's, just as I'm talking to you now, it's like, I need to know more about what we're talking about for IE. And so we had to make sure that everybody's up to speed on what's going on, so we were very clear on the way we're going to operationalize. Do you have anything?
No. $400 million and we're, we better not screw anything up, so.
Absolutely. So that's the reason we're not moving.
So, yeah, thank you for sharing that, Bill. I think, and again, you know, what, these are really important conversations and they take more time. As I know the Working Group discussed, Oregon has the highest co-pays in the country for childcare assistance programs. We have a, an important target, both in, I think, federal policy as well as state policy around ensuring that our reimbursement rates are at least at the 75%, the market rate. And we have, as you know, tremendous issues to build more supply. And so these are really, really important priorities. Some of these, and I think there's more, a lot more interest on the part of ELD and DHS to explore what can, what can be done and really just needing more time to be able to address some of these priorities, because $20 million a year biennium in federal funding is also unprecedented in terms of being able to put it toward these challenges. So that's sort of the space that we're in and thinking about, what are some of creative problem solving, problem solving solutions we can do? Some of these may not be able to be addressed in there entirely because of the IT, the IT issue with this $10.6 million, and some might be. And so I think that it's also important to remember that if these funds, any portion of these funds are put towards copayments or reimbursement rates, those have to be expended by next September. So I think that's the other factor that relates to this under the rules, the federal rules for when we have to spend in all of these funds. So there will be a lot more work before December and we'll keep the Council updated on that. We also made presentations before, before two committees this week, one House Early Childhood and Family Supports. So we touched on the work of the Children's Cabinet before that committee. We talked about the 2019, 2021 priorities for the Early Learning Division. And Chair Miller provided an update along with Alyssa on the Early Learning Council strategic planning work. So there's a lot of interest in, in, on the part of the Policy Committee to have the Council come back and to stay kind of informed about our work in terms of strategic planning and implications for the session, so.
I have a question about the, in the, in the Early Childhood and Family Supports meeting, you were talking about the home visiting. Sorry, this day has been fascinating. So you were talking about home visiting and that, but I, I think what, what, and I'm really excited about all of the home visiting. But I think where, you, you didn't go into details, was that to, because there are going to be several home visiting programs. So were you specifically talking about healthy families, or were you just kind of talking generically about it so that we're, and how, what's our plan to make sure that legislators are clear about? Yes, there are multiple home visiting programs, and here's why they're all important, and here's how they all fit together, kind of thing.
Yeah.
Or don't work on top of each other, or--
Right, right, I, yeah. We, I did, I didn't get any, any specific questions about that, I think, though. But yeah, I was talking kind of more broadly about some of the, again, some of the conversations that have been happening here around the need to expand home visiting, as well as other conversations at Children's Cabinet around greater investments, both in kind of more universal and targeted home visiting programs. So just speaking, yeah, more broadly.
Yeah, I just think that if, you know, like, nope, I can't say it that way. That's not really nice.
And I think more so to say, it's a topic of conversation and it's, therefore, it's a priority for the Division in terms of expansion, it's a priority for the Cabinet, and it, it will be a part of our strategic plan.
Right. I think what, yeah, what I'm trying to figure out is how do we explain to legislators why this is showing up in multiple budget asks and how that's not necessarily, like, we're, we're not trying to build three different--
They're not duplicative.
Yeah, they're not duplicative. One is universal for everyone. Then we'll either feed families into one of two other programs or into other services. And so I think that when we talk about it, I know that for the purposes of September Legislative Days, it was a bigger overview, but do we have a plan for how we're talking about why this is so exciting and why it's going to appear in several budgets and, you know, why they're all very important? I guess that's, that's what I was trying to get at.
Yeah.
My brain wasn't connecting the dots, sorry.
Yeah, absolutely. I think we can definitely continue to do that. I think that's some of what the Children's Cabinet helps us to do and hopefully as we move forward through the Governor's Budget Process, we'll be able to, you know, talk more specifically around some of the alignment of these different investments.
I just want to agree with Eva. The last thing we want is this to be set up, to take, be taken out of our hands and being, be set up as a battle between the different home visiting programs. We were very clearly pitted against each other in the past, at the state level, and not locally. Because locally, we all worked together because we had to. So I don't, I think we need to be very intentional not to let someone, not to let others take the narrative out of our hands. And, and we need to be able to say, we don't have enough home visiting, we need enough for everybody, and this, we're hoping to get there with this.
Yep. And then finally, Dawn and I presented before the Senate Human Services Committee, and we talked about a legislative concept that we've worked on in the Division around some statutory authority, around greater enforcement tools, and also talked about some of the gaps that we see as there is interest within that committee and Senator Gelsner to look at and better understand, you know, where we and the Division specifically in licensing might need greater enforcement authority.